Thank you so much, Chief Scott, and I also want to thank Commanders O'Sullivan and Commander Fong for the presentation. I do see Supervisor Preston on the roster first.
Thank you, President Walton, and thank you, Chief Scott, for your presentation. Just wanted to go back to the per capita data issue, which has been one that we discussed when you were before the board back in November. And you've included some additional information, and we've been in touch with you in between these hearings. You know, and let me make sure I get this right before I go into it, because it seems to me the per capita data, which was missing last time around, really tells at least part of a story that's extremely concerning. But I think we only have part of that story, and I want to make sure I'm interpreting the data right, but I also find out where the rest of it is. Specifically, from what you've presented on per capita data, it looks like at 5.8% of the San Francisco population being African Americans, 5.8%, that 59% of the suspects in 2020 were African American. 42% of the stops by the San Francisco Police Department were African Americans. 38% of the use of force were African Americans. And 25% of the arrests were African Americans. And that's all 2020 data. Do I have all that right?
The only part is the 2020, yes, the fourth quarter of 2020 is the report that that data was drawn from, yes.
Sorry, so that's the data from the fourth quarter? Or that's the data for the whole year 2020?
Fourth quarter, the fourth quarter.
And do you have with you, and are you able to share right now, the data from previous time periods? So 2018, 2019, 2020, on the per capita data by race on each of those categories?
No, I don't have that with me. And part of what will need to be done at some point in the future, so we can compare apples to apples, is do just that. I think I may have expressed to people that inquired that in order for us to be able to actually have accurate comparison, we have to compare like data. So we have to go back with the data that we have and do those same breakdowns, per capita ratios, to compare the previous years. I don't have that in front of me, but that can be done.
Chief, and through the President, I don't understand why, what the difficulty is here. Like if you have, you have come before us. You have the number of people upon whom force has been used. And you have the number of people who are African American upon whom force has been used, right? What am I missing here? Because it seems to me this has been asked for an extensive amount of time by Wealth and Disparities in Black community and other community activists. We asked for this in November and asked for that after the last hearing. Two weeks ago, I emailed. It seems very simple, and I don't understand. What is the data that is missing of why, you know, you're presenting a slide that shows us the absolute number of, say, uses of force declining year after year, right? But you have, the department has the data, right, of how many of those people are African American. Why do we not have the rates and the per capita data per year? What do you need to get to have that?
Well, Supervisor, I don't think you're missing anything. I just want to reemphasize, and I said this earlier, we only, we have X amount of people that can do this work. And it may sound, if you take this in a vacuum and take all the other work and demands that they have, you know, we are stretched very thin in terms of the people that do our analysis. And we're willing to do it, we will do it. But this does take a lot of personnel hours to crush these numbers. And I had mentioned earlier that we don't have the technology where we would like to have it. But if you're not missing anything, but I think what's not being said here, and I want to say it as clear as possible and respectfully as possible, we have to prioritize our work. And we get all kinds of requests for data. And we have a team of people that do that. And they have to prioritize the work. And their, the willingness is there. But the issue and the challenge for us is we got people doing multiple jobs to get some of this work through. And we can't accommodate all the requests that we have at one time. We have to prioritize, we have to get the work done. And we'll do it. I mean, that's, I've said that, I've told the concerned community members that we agreed to do that, but we can't do everything at once.
Chief, I just, I want to drill down this because I want to understand what data we have and what data we don't have. Because here's the thing from where I sit, is the day, the per capita data tells a dramatically different story, at least the limited piece of it we have from one quarter of 2020, than the non-per capita data. And so what we have received are statements about the progress being made on a number of fronts. The data that supports that, showing decreasing use of force and other things. But the piece of data that contradicts that, in other words, the data that probably most clearly shows whether there is bias and to what extent there is bias, is the per capita data, right? It doesn't make any, and I made this point last time, but I just want to say it again because it's incredibly frustrating that we don't have this data. If your, if your crime rate in a city theoretically drops in half, and you come in and you show a chart that shows crime dropping in half, right, that doesn't tell you anything about bias. If before crime dropped, 50% of the people you were arresting were African Americans, and then crime drops in half and 50% of the people you're arresting are still African Americans, you haven't changed the bias in the department. So, you know, this is, this is, this is not just a data point. This is, this is the data point in some ways. And here's what I don't, I still don't understand. If you know who's arrested, do you have the data, let's say, from 2019 in the police department of all the people, of the number of use of force and the number of those people who are African American? Do you or someone in the department have that information?
Yes, we do. And I just, I want to say, Supervisor Preston, I, I'm not exactly following that example that you made. We, look, we don't have anything hide. The data all points to the same issue. Is that we have a disparity issue that we have to fix. Whether you divide it by, per capita by 1,000, 100,000, it all points the same way. And the issue is, we have a disparity problem. The California, the Center for Policing Equity report called it out. The original DOJ report called it out. The 96, the Chapter 96A reports have called it out. Regardless of how we look at the data, we have a problem. And I don't really, I mean, I'm trying to follow your example of the crime statistics and all that. When this report was, was created by the Board of Supervisors, we reported the data as we were told to do. That's evolved over the years. And now we, we're being asked to report in a different manner. We're willing to do that. And so that, I, I see your frustration, and I'm trying to understand
Sure.
the question that you're asking. But what I want to emphasize is, we are willing to do that. But I also want to emphasize that there are personnel challenges. We have a lot of data requests. And, you know, to manipulate that data in different ways may sound simple, but they are, it's challenging.
Chief, this, I hear what you're saying, and I don't, I don't want to be argumentative here because I, but, but I think it is important that the, that the data is not being present. I think you have the data, the department has the data. As I think you've just given, you know the number of, you know the number of arrests, uses of force and so forth, and you know the number of those by race. You have that information. And yet you come to the board in November, and we're back now. And my office has been asking over and over again with the graphs that are not the per capita data per year. So what I want to know, and just to be really clear, is if you were to look at three years' worth of data of the per capita data, the rate at which African Americans are stopped, are suspects, are victims, or forces used against them. If you were to look at that graph over three years, is it flat? Is it rising? Is it going down? And, and, and I don't, I don't understand the disconnect here because, because we have made this request now repeatedly. Your department is presenting graphs. You just did it again today, the last, those final slides, showing the trajectory of decreasing overall numbers. But you're not showing us year to year. You're not even showing us one complete years of data. You're showing us almost nothing other than one quarter, one quarter at the end of 2020. You're not showing us how the department is faring. So maybe you have, and I have no reason to doubt that you've achieved 131 or 190 of these reports. One of my concerns, it doesn't look like it's working until whether the, whether the, the rates are increasing or decreasing.
Yeah, let me ask you a question because you asked, is it going down the total year? Yes, it's going down. And we illustrated that. I know you have a data request that we're compiling the data that you're requesting.
Chief, sorry, you haven't illustrated that. When you say 59% of suspects were African American in the final quarter of 2020, I have no idea how that compares to 2019, 2018. Is that double what it was the year before? Is it half of what the year is before? And this is like, send me the numbers and I'll do the percentages in a half hour, in 10 minutes. This is not, if you have the data, it's just a matter of how you're choosing to present it. And for some reason, whoever's preparing your presentations every time is not showing us the trends on per capita use of force, arrests, suspects, and so forth.
Well, I'm trying to be responsive to your question. You asked me that whether it's going down. The reports comparing quarter to quarter was how that report was, we were told to do it that way from the start. We can do, we can add up four quarters of data and show an aggregate total for the year. If that's, if that's your question. If you do that, and we've done that, those numbers are decreasing. Some more than others, particularly in use of force. So yes, to answer your question and to reemphasize, it, those numbers are trending on a downward trajectory, particularly in use of force.
All right, and I know my fellow colleagues have questions, so I don't want to belabor this. I do want to just clarify, and I hope we're on the same page. What, what I want, and we've requested this by email, I'm just going to repeat it since we're here on the record. I want to see, year to year, the percent of stops that are African Americans, Latin, by race. The percent of use of force that is upon African Americans, Latinos, others, right? That is, that, that is a, in a crucial statistic to our whole discussion about what's working and what isn't. And, and that's the piece, it seems like you have, it is, you have all the info to generate those numbers. It is not time consuming, but it feels like there's a disconnect around those. And I would just like to, to make sure that you can promptly provide that information. If I need to reword or clarify the request, I'm happy to. But I, I think it's essential that, that we get that. And, and, and I think that tells a story. And, you know, I mean, Chief, the, the, the reality, I think, for all of us is like, we're, you know, we're all entitled to their, our own opinions on this stuff. But, but we got to be working from the same data and to just keep coming in with slides showing the decreasing overall numbers, but not addressing the rates of these things by, by race, I think, is problematic. So are we, can we expect that information over the last at least three years? And how it has changed over time?
Supervisor, I believe we have provided percent, but I just want to clarify what you're asking for. If you're asking for what you requested, yes. And I think my staff has already been in communication with yours. We are compiling that data. The percent, I'm a little confused on, on this piece. If you're asking for a percentage by race, if you're asking for it to be aggregated for the, each of the four quarters for a year to show an entire year's percentage, yes, we can do that, if that's what you're asking for. But I just want to-
I just want, I want to be very clear. We've been provided, whether you call it by quarter, by year, we have been provided absolutely nothing that is per capita data until today in which you've presented us the information from the fourth quarter of 2020. And we have, we have requested this in, you know, in writing. I requested it at the last hearing. Whether you want to put that as a percentage, which is basically the number per 100, or a per capita rate per 1,000 or whatever, is not the issue. The issue is, we don't have any of that provided to us. We've requested it repeatedly.
Supervisor, you know, we, as I said, we are providing you what you asked for. And we will finish that request. And hopefully, what you asked for is the same thing you're asking for now. I, I'm a little, it doesn't sound exactly the same as what you asked for, but we will provide what you're asking for, yes.
Thank you, thank you, President Walton. And again, thank you, colleagues. I'm sure others have, have questions.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Preston. Supervisor Haney?
Thank you. Thank you, President Walton, and thank you, Chief Scott. I do just want to pick up on one piece of Supervisor Preston's question there. Because, of course, on this particular issue, which is most, I think, atrocious from, 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 from all of our perspective, I hope, which is the disparities as it relates to black people in arrests and stops and use of force. Is it, is it your sense and understanding of the data along the lines of what Supervisor Preston said that there has been a decrease over time in that, in those disparities over the last few years? Or has it remained consistent? Or, or, or has it gone up? That, that's what I think Supervisor Preston is saying. Based on what's been presented to us, we don't have any sense of the trend line in disparities. The disproportionality. Is, is where we ended up in the fourth quarter of 2020 lower than where we were from your sense a year before, or higher, or?
Supervisor Preston, what it shows over time is, it shows not a straight line down because there are some quarters where it's up, there are some quarters where it's down. And those numbers usually don't skew wildly. But over time, if you map the trend line, it shows a downward trend of disparity, particularly among African Americans and use of force, yes.
And, and that's not just in-
Sorry, Supervisor Haney, I'm sorry.
Okay, it was partly the similar question. So, and that's not just raw numbers, that's an actual disproportionality. So that, that, that's what we, we, I know in overall numbers, it has gone down because it's gone down, at least for use of force for everyone, pretty significantly. But we're wondering if the, if the disproportion, if the, if the rate itself has gone down.
So it, so as Supervisor Preston asks about the percentage, when you compare the percentages of African Americans, of the other races, and you do that over time, from 2016, when this data first was collected, to 2020, you see a downward trend, both in the disparities and the aggregate number of use of force in that category. The aggregate number goes down a lot faster, but there is a downward trend overall over that period in the disparity rate.
All right. Thank you. I want to ask specifically on this, on this issue of, of the reforms and whether they are addressing the, particularly the disproportionality as it relates to black people in our, in our city on all of those, those measures. You know, there's, there's hitting off the various reforms and recommendations that the DOJ presented. And then there's, of course, are we actually, you know, moving the ball on improvements in how people experience policing as, as reflected in the, in the data, particularly around, you know, systemic racism towards black people and their interactions with the police? Do you believe that these reforms, if, if we complete all of them, that we are going to see significant progress on those numbers and on the overall change and experience that particularly as it relates to black disproportionality? That, that we are going to see a real change there? That that will actually accomplish creating more equity in policing in our city?
I do. I don't, you won't, I don't think we will see it instantly. I think you'll see a steady progression and a downward trend. But I don't think it'll happen instantly because with policy improvements, with the things that have been recommended for us to implement, as we have implemented and completed recommendations and continue to evolve, you do see the downward trend. So I think that will continue. I think our policies, particularly some of our policies that have recently been adopted by the Police Commission go in that, definitely go toward that regard. So yes, I do think you will. And that's, that's why we're doing this work. I mean, that, that's, that's the expectation that you will see a trend. I don't think, just from seeing this work around the nation, I've never seen an instant turnaround in, in those numbers. But what I have seen is a progression, a trend that goes in the right direction. And over time, it gets much better. And I think that's what we're seeing here. And I believe that's what we will continue to see here.
I have a few just, just specific questions that I wonder if you might be able to answer related to things in the presentation. On, on page 34 of the report, it shows numbers for, for each of the various categories of compliance. And, and the numbers as it relates to completed and substantially compliant are, are combined. Do you have those disaggregated? Do you actually say what we've actually completed versus substantially compliant? Because of course, those things are different.
Yeah, we do. So we have a pure number. And when I say a pure number, the, the way this work has evolved, we have a pure number, and that's 131 recommendations. Each have whatever number of compliance measures. Once those recommendations are totally validated by the California DOJ, all of those are substantially compliant. We also have work in progress. We have recommendations, as was described, that are in the process of review by the California DOJ, but they have not been officially deemed substantially compliant. I mentioned this in our last presentation in October. Part of our process now is we really increase the technical assistance where a lot of the, the issues are worked out before we submit a recommendation. We have what is known as a pre-screening process where we sit down with Hillard Hines and the California DOJ representatives, and we go over the compliance measures. And with that, they pretty much let us know their opinion on whether or not that recommendation and the compliance measures are ready for, that it has, you know, every probability of making substantial compliance. And so there, those have been completed because we've had those technical advice conversations. But the substantial compliance, we haven't gotten the confirmation yet. So that's why we, we separate them. And then there's a third body of work of those recommendations that are in progress. So some recommendations may have six compliance measures. As the work progresses, we may hit the mark on three of them. We have three to complete. So those conversations are always ongoing. So we have a good feel of the ones where we are there with a compliance measure. We, but the actual recommendation is not done until, in that example I just gave, until all six compliance measures are deemed to be completed. But there is, there's constantly work in progress. Let's say we have to implement a policy. And then we have to implement an audit to audit whether the policy has been, been issued to all of our members. The policy implementation will be one compliance measure in this example that I'm giving. The audit would be the second compliance measure. And perhaps in between that, Police Commission adoption may be the third compliance measure. So we can do the policy, we get it adopted, that's two out of three. Then we have to do the audit. We get all three, then we will be found as substantially compliant. So there's a large body of work in progress like that that we know that we completed. But until we get the entire recommendation completed, we can't, we can't say that it's a substantial compliant recommendation. So I think we have done a more complete job of explaining the work in progress. But to answer your question, yeah, we can differentiate between those that are purely because the recommendation is totally done and those that are partially done where we've had conversations and we know where we are on those as well.
Yeah, that would be great if you could, if you could disaggregate those. Last question.
Supervisor, on, I think, slide 35 is where that is done. I kind of had to brush through it pretty quickly because we ran out of time. But at slide 35, it actually breaks that down.
So 131 are fully completed.
That's recommendations, yes.
And 193 are either completed or substantially compliant.
So let me make sure I explain that. So 100, out of the 193, 131, California DOJ has said you're substantially compliant. There's 62 where we've done the pre-screening, we submitted them, the work is complete. We're just waiting on the confirmation from the Cal DOJ that we're substantially compliant. And because of our processes now, we have a very high success rate, almost 100%. Once we get to that submission, where it's coming back as substantial compliance because we're having all those conversations and working out all the issues before we submit it, unlike when we first started this process.
Can you, can you, and last question. Can you clarify the role of, on the one hand, Hillard Hines? And, and can you clarify whether you're, you're planning to have a Hillard Hines continue in a professional consultancy capacity? And what, what their role is moving forward? And then secondary to that, I didn't hear a whole lot in your presentation about the Police Commission. And I would like to better understand what the role is of the Police Commission as your oversight body in validating your ongoing work on this project. Are they, do they sign off on, on each of these as well? Do they, how, how do they play an active oversight role in validating this work?
The reform, let me, I'm going to take time to be thorough on this because I really think it's important to understand how reform is working and how it's worked in this country and how it still works. And so Hillard Hines, their role, they are consultants. They provide technical expertise, whether that be internally or, or bringing others into the, into the mix or guiding us to outside sources of information or, or expertise that will help us get to where we want to get to on reform. The way reform is structured usually is police departments that undergo reform usually bring in some entity for technical expertise. I mean, the bottom line is, if departments could do it on their own, they wouldn't have to be reformed. But whether it be consent decree, NSAs like our partners in Oakland are doing, or collaborative reform, each one of those methods of reform, there's usually expertise that's brought in to help provide technical assistance outside people that can help move the reform forward. For us, that's Hillard Hines. The California DOJ plays a role as basically an independent, objective validator of the work. So they work in collaboration with Hillard Hines in terms of, Hillard Hines will write the reports along with provide the technical assist, technical assistance. They, we, we, all three of us, collaborative reform means just that. We came to the table voluntarily, and we brought in partners to help us move this reform. We came to the table voluntarily and we brought in partners to help us move this reform forward. So the California DOJ's role, they provide technical expertise, which they have done and done a very helpful job of that, in my opinion. They also review our work. So the Attorney General and his, and his staff review our work, and they are the ones that really determine whether or not these recommendations that we, that we submit to them meet the compliance measures. That's the California DOJ under the guidance of the Attorney General. That's the, that's the MOU we signed with the DOJ. The Police Commission is the oversight body for the Police Department. We report to the Police Commission, they, we update them on our progress. Now we do that monthly. Also, the Commission is very involved in the actual work. The Commission approves all of our general orders. They're involved in a lot of the work groups that have to do with general orders. They provide direction and oversight to me and the department on the direction of the department. They are involved in a lot of the discussions about the policy moving forward. For instance, our bias department general order, we had two commissioners that took a part in the development of that policy. And ultimately, I and the Police Department are accountable to the Police Commission. But we have an independent evaluator to evaluate the work and an independent evaluator with expertise in this subject matter, which most police commissioners, they are, they are a policy body, they are our oversight body, they are accountability arm in terms of keeping, and they're a discipline arm in terms of any discipline over ten days suspension. But reform around this country and the practices in reform is that independent subject, subject matter experts are brought in to either monitor the work or to help move the work forward through technical assistance. And a consent decree, that's in the form of an independent monitor usually, and some independent entity that either audits or, or helps with the independent monitor's function to do what Cal DOJ is doing for us. So I think that configuration has been pretty much an industry standard that's constantly evolving. And just say one last thing about this. The collaborative reform work was put in place really to be a more cost-effective reform mechanism for police agencies, police and sheriff's agencies that were willing to do the reform. And when the US DOJ was involved in this process, what made it more cost-effective is they provided the technical assistance that Hillard Hines provides. They provided, we don't, Cal DOJ, they don't charge us anything. We don't have to pay for that. But when the US DOJ did it, we didn't have to pay for much of that technical assistance because they provided it. When they pulled out of that work is when the mayor at the time, myself and the Police Commission decided to continue to go on with the work and get another collaborative partner, which ended up being the Attorney General and the California DOJ. So I, I took the time to explain that because I want to really stress the importance of having, number one, technical assistance in terms of reform. Secondly, independent evaluation that also provides technical assistance. And that, that formula actually is, is really industry standards of, of how reform is done, regardless of whether it's a consent decree or collaborative reform or other forms of reform, that's usually the formula. Reform, anyway.
And, and just to, just last thing, so what is the ongoing relationship with Hillard Hines going to look like? I know there was a question as to whether the consultancy is going to continue or?
Yes. So as of now, we will be engaged with Hillard Hines through, through the summer into the fall of this year. We have, as I said, we, we plan and we're, we're on track to be completed with ninety-four percent of the, of the recommendations by that point. We're working on the last phase. There are fifteen recommendations, seven in use of force, foreign accountability, foreign community policing. Some of them will require some, some budgetary discussions to be had. In an ideal situation, we will retain some level of technical expertise. We will retain some level of an entity like the Cal DOJ to validate the work. But we have not arrived at what that's going to look like at this point. There's an outside chance of some of the fifteen, we may be able to make some, some movement on before the end of the summer. But what it looks like right now is about fifteen recommendations we'll have remaining of the two seventy-two by the time we issue the last report from the California DOJ, which will be a, toward the end of summer, this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Haney. Supervisor Melgar?
Thank you so much. I want to start out by thanking President Walton for having this hearing. I think it's really important that we stay on top of this in a regular and consistent basis. So thank you Chief Scott. I want to start on the positive note to my comments that, you know, the issue of bias in our police force way predated you coming on board. And I appreciate your commitment and hard work. And I wanted to tell you that, and I've told you that in person. That being said, you know, I want to echo back to some of the comments that my colleague Supervisor Preston did. I have seen in my district and District Seven a rise in property crimes, and folks are really worried about that. And, you know, when I see that and then also see the statistics per capita, it makes me really wonder whether you're arresting the right people, you know? I think it's the point that Supervisor Preston made. So, you know, for, for, I just want to remind us in this conversation about the data points and what data we're producing, that the ultimate goal of the department, our ultimate goal should be safety for all of our residents. And, you know, I, I think I mentioned to you, Chief Scott, that I'm a mother, I have three kids. Two of my kids are black. And as a mother, looking at these statistics, it makes me deeply ashamed, Chief Scott, and fearful for the future of my kids and all the other kids in San Francisco who should feel safety. So that's our goal. Our goal is safety. And so the data, the collection of data needs to be our top priority because it helps chart a path towards that safety, not the data in and of itself or even the department recommendations, although I think it's a bare minimum that we achieve those, but that we are charting a path towards equity and safety for all our residents, including my kids. So I just wanted to say that. But I also wanted to ask you some, some details about the data that you did present because, you know, they're pretty startling. And I, Supervisor Preston said, I, I would at some point appreciate seeing the comparison of previous years. But I wanted to also ask you what the denominator is for those numbers? Because, you know, say that fifty-nine percent of arrests, how many of those, fifty-nine percent of, of what? What is the total universe? If we have five percent of folks who are African-American who are residents, are, is it possible that some of those fifty-nine percent of folks that you arrested are not San Francisco residents? Are there people who are arrested who are not San Francisco residents? And do you keep data, you know, of those numbers? So, you know, because I think that that's also a really important picture to see.
Yeah, that, that's, that's an excellent question and, and a really good point. There, there are some of the folks that we come in contact with either via stops, arrests, reports of suspects or on view by officers or independent observations who aren't San Francisco residents. So the data, the, the data on that is, there, there are some methodologies that try to take that into account. For instance, if you compare that to some, some, some of the traffic data, you get a, say, a better comparison that factors in individuals who may not be from, from San Francisco. And the way that's done is it really takes from, the data from traffic accidents, not traffic stops, traffic accidents, because the theory behind that is people involved in accidents, there's really no, no, no bias that goes into that. You know, it's not based on an officer stopping somebody or somebody calling on somebody that, you know, you're involved in accidents, an accident. So that data is going to be more pure in terms of looking at it from an angle of whether or not there's bias involved. And if you compare that data to our, our stops, it, it does paint a slightly different picture. So that's one of the ways that the California Department of Justice and their reporting looks at our, looks at everybody's data who reports to them on the RIPA report. So, and it, it does, there are some differences there. So that's a very good point that you made, and there are some differences, and I think that does need to be accounted for.
Well, yes. So in going forward and as I trust that we're going to have these hearings on a regular basis, I would like to work with my other colleagues to drill down on what data points we really want to compare, again, with a goal of having, you know, a roadmap towards safety in our communities. Because we want to make sure that, you know, everyone is treated with justice and equality. And, you know, your recommendations, the Department of Justice's recommendations are helping, you know, put together policies and procedures. But overall, what we need to see is, you know, the numbers actually reflect those values. And we're not seeing that today. But so, thank you, Chief, you've answered my questions, and I will yield.
Thank you Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Safai?
Thank you, President Walton. Thank you, Chief. I have a, I have a number of questions. I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm, not to belabor the report, the point on data, but just, just for the record, it's my understanding that the Commission, your Commission recently asked or required that per capita disparity reporting would be done by the department, and that was just last week. Is that, is that correct? Or, or just recently?
Yeah, that is correct. That is correct.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I, I, yeah, that is correct. And again, this is a, a, a part of this process is, is number one, engaging with our, our community members and our stakeholders in our community. And I think that engagement has pushed this, this issue forward. You know, the, the Black Wealth and Disparities group that I meet with quarterly, I think now the Commission is meeting with them, and I think they, they probably will, will be on this call and public comment. They pushed that issue forward, and they've asked for the data, and I, you know, I definitely see some of the frustration in the getting that data out there in a, in a format that, you know, everybody wants. So we do intend to do that. We have committed to that, and our Commission has, has directed that as well. So it goes back to, you know, part of the Commission's role, they have directed that as well. So that will happen. But that's something that, that conversation was happening, and, you know, we've evolved. And I think that definitely our stakeholders have pushed that issue forward. So definitely we hear the calls for that, and we will do it.
Okay, great. I think that, that's going to be helpful for us moving forward to really understand, to see if we're aggregating all the numbers in terms of all the metrics that you have and you're incorporating everyone, it, it dilutes the information. If we're truly trying to get at disparities in policing, we have to really pull the data out and refine it and, and magnify it. And I think that's why per capita is so important. I think you get that. I'm not telling you anything that you don't get. I just want to make sure moving forward that, you know, I've been in conversations with police commissioners, they've informed us that they're doing that. Wealth and disparities has made this a top priority, the community's made it a top priority. My second question would be the ninety-six A reports and the RIPA reports, would it, it would be helpful if that data could be converted also into per capita so that we could see that data as well? And, and I think data tells the story. It's, it's hard to, it's hard not to hide information. The other thing, just, just as me as a supervisor in terms of wanting to know how, you know, my station or my zip code or my area is doing, if that's something that could, you know, potentially be incorporated in, or if you're able to tell us where the concentration of all this is happening in terms of the different communities, that, that might also be helpful. The, the next question I had was, you know, ultimately, I understand that the Cal DOJ contract is going to expire in April. We talked about Hillard Hines, but what's the plan moving forward with the Cal DOJ after this April?
Well, right now, we're, we're working with Cal DOJ for those, that five and a half percent that I mentioned, the fifteen recommendations, so that we believe that will remain after our MOU expires. We haven't, hopefully by the next report, we'll have an update on what that, where that lands. But definitely they're, they're helping us with the technical assistance on the planning piece of this. It'll be thoughtful and it'll be well thought out, and we'll land somewhere. I don't know, really, because they're in transition with, you know, the Attorney General being appointed to the President's Cabinet. A new Attorney General hasn't been named yet. So our plan right now is to move forward full speed ahead on the work that we know we can get done within the next few months.
Can you, I'm, I'm sorry, Chief, can you explain that to me? So let's assume we get someone, a, a new Attorney General, and your contract expires in April. You're saying that you, that you believe that there'll be fifteen outstanding recommendations from the two hundred and seventy-two. How hard will it be or, you know, to extend that contract and continue to work with the Cal DOJ?
I don't know, because, you know, that contract was signed by the Attorney General. I mean, he had to agree to it. We worked with his office and our Commission and the mayor's office in making that happen. Our mayor, you know, would have to agree to it, and, and of course, you know, the Police Department. So without knowing who the Attorney General will be, she or he, we hope, we're in this, this age right now where I, I don't think anybody will step away from reform. And I know-
Let me just ask you differently. Let's assume that the, the Attorney General is committed to it. Are you committed to continuing to work with the Cal DOJ to make sure that we still have outside verification of this process?
Yeah, absolutely. That, that, that would be the ideal arrangement for a couple of reasons. And I think that deserves some context for a couple of reasons. They know the department. They've been working with us now for three years. They understand the work. And one of the challenges that we faced when the US DOJ pulled out of the work, people asked, you know, what took so long? We, we had to restart. You know, the California DOJ had to come in, we basically had to restart. And that's, some of that, some of the takeaways from that were very positive because that's how we came to the compliance measures and which is a much more definitive way to look at this work and to evaluate this work. But it, it did take time. It took, it took over a year and a half to get the compliance measures ironed out. So, you know, I don't think it would be in our best interest to restart that process with a brand new, you know, entity when we're so close to, at that point, we'll be so close to finishing the work. And there's momentum going, and you've got everybody who, we have a good working relationship. It's collaborative, which everybody has agreed to be on the table, you know? Nobody's forced to be here. And I would hate to have to reset that. So ideally, yes. I can't answer for the, you know, California DOJ, but ideally, yes. And definitely they're working with us in terms of at least the planning piece of this. And we'll see where it lands.
Okay. I mean, I, I just, just to kind of tie it back to the data, I mean, I think that you got the DOJ outside verification, you've made the commitment, you've kind of framework of where we're going. But it seems like there's still some confusion. We have the, we've spoken to both, you know, a number of the commissioners, President Cohen, Vice President Elias, you know, they have, I, I understand that they're going to continue to push on ensuring that we're on the same page in the data collection. And I think that helps us understand, you know, how we're truly making progress. So that kind of leads to my next question. So, you know, in, in terms of this reform work and the term, the ultimate goal of decreasing racial disparities in policing, would you commit to that being one of your top priorities over the next year? Or have you already? Or are you on the record of saying that that's an important goal for this department in terms of what we're trying to accomplish with this? Because recommendations are recommendations, goals are goals, but ultimately it's about a culture. Ultimately, it has to have a, a final outcome. And I think that there's been a constant strive toward the elimination of racial disparity in policing. So really wanted to see if we, you know, we can get you on the record saying that that's a top priority and, and if you're committed to that. And, and I'm sure you, you have said that in the past, but just wanted- the past, but just wanted to ask again on the record.
Yes, it is. I'm committed to it, the department's committed to it, the police commission is committed to it, and the mayor is committed to it. So, yes, you all are committed to it. It is a priority of ours, and we know there's a lot of work that we have to do in this area, and I think we can be a leader in this area. I think our policies are some, some very good policies, and we've been told by others, outsiders looking in, that we are leaders in terms of some of our policies that are very progressive, and I think they'll help us get there.
So, Chief, what ultimately will be the metric of success in this reform work for you? I know there's been a lot of conversation and commitments made to the public. There's been a lot of conversations and commitments made to black residents, black community, brown and black communities in terms of policing. But what really are the ultimate tangible results in the outcome of this work that we're trying to accomplish?
Well, first of all, this work was designed to, is it slide one? Earn trust where none exists. Gain trust. Increase trust where trust is waning. Transparency, which also helps us to increase trust. The disparities, we have to reduce the disparities, and even with the challenges in our society, in our system, we have to do our part to reduce disparities in policing. Our policies have to be ever-evolving. This work really never ends, and it never should, because one of the mistakes that I think has been made in the past with many departments is, let's say, in our case, we complete the 272 and we say we're done. That's the wrong way to go. That's not the way this should go, because this work has to continue. A lot of our compliance measures speak to continuous improvement loops, which is, that's the issue of a continuous improvement loop. How do you keep the work going, and how do you sustain it? And how do you ensure a culture of being a self-reflective department where you're always assessing where your mistakes are, where your flaws are, and how to get better? That's what continuous improvement means. So part of reform is just that, and a huge part of that for us is our policy development. Now, our commission has passed a approved general order that we will revisit our policies on a five-year rolling basis from now on. So we will never have a time in this department again where we go 20, 30 years without looking at a policy and adjusting a policy. That's huge, and I think that is the type of transformative and progressive police department that can sustain some of this work that we're trying to achieve. And then in terms of the hiring and diversity and how that plays in all this, I did a last slide, we ended with, you know, our recent academy classes, we have to be a diverse department, and that is easier said than...
And that's something, Chief, that we worked on at the end of last summer, at least we had a conversation about, about the commitment to diversity and hiring and training. But it's also about promotion, it's also about your command staff, it's also about leadership positions. So ensuring that you have the people that are in positions of power that are making the decisions that are impacting the communities that are most impacted by racial disparities is also important. Can you talk about that for a moment?
Yes. So that is a big part of what reform is aimed to do, not only at the hiring stage of the recruitment stage, the retention stage, but also the trajectory within the department, the promotions. Now, we are diverse in terms of our command staff, our supervisory ranks, but there definitely can be improvements. There definitely are areas where we're not as strong as we would like to be. You know, equity is a big part of that, and our Equity and Inclusion Plan, our strategic plan, you know, with the mayor's leadership and guiding all city departments to really dive into that, I think will help us not only get to where we want to be, but really stay there and be a leader among this. So those issues are really important. We do have a diverse department that was called out in the US DOJ report, and we've become even more diverse since then. But the but for us is, it can't just stop there. You know, it can't be, like I said earlier, a minute ago, we can't creep into the mindset that once we check the box on a recommendation or check all 272 boxes, that we're done. You know, this work should never end, and if it never ends, we don't find ourselves slipping backwards and getting into fourth or a consent decree or, you know, having a major reform initiative, because it's always, we're always working on that. And that's really the key to this, sustainability, keeping this work going beyond the 272.
Well, Chief, you have my commitment, as I've said before, to ensure that, one, we achieve these goals. We do it in partnership with those in the community, but we also do it, and that's your charge, to do it with your rank and file. I know that a lot of times, in a lot of different departments, it's, there's a top-down approach. I know that, you know, that can be a way in which many operations are run, but, you know, what kind of, what kind of work or have you involved your rank and file in this reform process? Have you tried to incorporate or make this potentially a bottom-up or involve the community in this decision-making and as well as the rank and file? I know that Wealth and Disparities has been very involved in this process, but have the rank and file and other affinity groups within your department been involved in helping this reform process?
Yes, and thank you for asking that question, Supervisor, because I think it's really important to really kind of spend a little, a minute on that. Yes, the answer is yes. Yes, for a community, we've gotten better at it, and not just by my account, and you listened to some of the comments at Police Commission, particularly recently, over the last six months. Very, very positive comments from many of our community stakeholders who've been involved in this work for a long time. So part of this process, and when you, the question earlier, what takes so long? I've been in this business now going on 32 years. 16 of it has been in a reform mode, 12 with my former department and four here. So I've done this at all levels of policing, and I will tell you, when reform was first introduced, when I was at the worker level, number one, you got to get over the shock of, hey, our department has some serious flaws. That takes a minute. Not everybody gets it right away. And the second thing is, once you get over that shock, you have to embrace the work. You have to understand it and embrace it. That takes a while, because you gotta, you really have to roll this out where people understand what it is that we're doing, what the vision and the mission is. That takes a while. Then you get the, once people embrace it and they understand it, then they start to engage. For us, that process really took about two and a half years. Not to say that we didn't have police officer-level people doing work, because we did, but I'm talking about to get to the point where we are now, where people really, really understand the work, really are embracing it by far, and are engaged to the level of that they are right now. That took us about, about three years, you know, three, three and a half years. So this last, really, eight months, since the summer, we've been moving at an accelerated place, because these things have come together. So the rank and file is very involved in this process. We have taken officers out of patrol, and the last six months, I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, we detail both commanders and from patrol officers and everything in between to accelerate this work. And I got to say, some of our, some of our best ideas and some of our really important work has come from officers that are patrol officers. And that's really enlightening, because that, I mean, that's encouraging, rather, because these officers are going to be here for a while, they're the future of the department, and they understand what we're doing, and they understand why. And that's really, really important, and that's how this work has a chance to be successful in the future and to be sustained in the future, because they are involved.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, President Walton. I don't have any further questions right now. As I said, I'm committed to continuing this work, working with the community and yourself and other members of the board to see this process through.
Thank you Supervisor Safai. And Supervisor Preston, before I call on you, I just, I do have a few questions and statements, and then I'll come back to you if that's okay. And thank you so much for the presentation, Chief. You know, I really do appreciate you coming before us and having this follow-up. But I do have a statement that I have to make, because I think there's a fundamental difference in terms of part of what we see as the problem within the Police Department, and I know, you know, you always talk about implicit bias, and you push training for implicit bias. But when you look at data on slides 13 through 15, and you see the disproportionate amount of black people arrested per capita, black people stopped per capita, I think the problem is we're not calling out what the issue is, and it is true systemic and blatant racism. That's not just implicit bias, that's racism that exists within your department. Somebody has to say that, somebody has to state that out loud, that it is racism, and it's further than implicit bias, to have this kind of disproportionate amount of data. And so since nobody has said it from your department, I'm going to say it, it's racism, and it's deeper than implicit bias. You know, and a big part of that problem, too, as we look at the things that exist in our communities among races, this data helps turn communities against each other, because what your police department is telling other people of color, other races, other communities, is that black people are the enemy. And if our police department can't do a better job of treating people with dignity and respect, how do we expect for that to happen across the city? None of these recommendations being completed mean anything if we don't change what exists in that data on slides 13 through 15. So the first thing we got to do is call out what it is, and it's not implicit bias. We're beyond that. And the more we keep focusing on the issue that is not there, we're going to continue to have the same problems. The texts that we got sent, that officers sent out amongst each other a couple of years ago, that's racism. Some of the POA publications that we've seen here in San Francisco, that's racism. So we have to call that out so we can begin to really deep dive deep into making the change that we want to see. And like I said, I appreciate your work. I think Supervisor Melgar said it best, the issues that existed in San Francisco didn't start when you got here, but we do have to make some change, and we have to focus on the problem at hand and call it out for what it is. And I know, my first question, because I know you, you're hiring more diverse police force, and I do think that is a step in the right direction, but what is the racial breakdown of command staff? And what percentage of command staff is black?
So I can do the math as we talk. So we have three sworn command staff members who are African-American, a commander, a deputy chief, and myself, Chief of Police. We have three commanders, well, one commander, two commanders, who are female, one deputy chief who's female. We have one commander who's Indian. We have two, three commanders out of our five who are white, two of them women, one male, four, four actually, four out of six, I mean. So we are diverse, and I'm going to get the math while I'm talking, but just to illustrate, we are diverse in terms of our professional staff, which is a part of our command staff. There's also, they're actually very much diverse as well, out of our directors. We have two African-American women, one Latinx woman, one white woman, one Hispanic male, and one white male. We're extremely diverse in our command staff, so that is, is one of our goals, and I think it's a goal that we have, when you look at our organizational chart, you see the diversity that's reflective of the city. Our Assistant Chief, one white, and one who is Hispanic or Dominican. So we're very diverse. When you look at our captains' ranks and our sergeants' ranks and our lieutenants' ranks, we're also diverse. There's some areas where I'd like to see us more diverse, there's some areas where I'd like to see an increase in some of our demographics, and definitely that's something that is a work in progress, and we're encouraging people to take the task, to get the experience necessary to be eligible for those upward opportunities. But we are very, we are diverse. I mean, the criticism, the findings in 2016 was that there was not diversity up and down the ranks. I think when you look at our ranks right now, as we sit here today, we are diverse. We're always striving to be diverse, our lists are diverse, and there are areas that I'd like to see more diverse, yes, but we do have good diversity.
And Chief, when you get a chance, if you could send us a list of your command staff with the percentages and all the diversity that you just named, that would be great.
Yeah, certainly. And we publish actually a monthly report on our diversity that's publicly available. I will send you that, and that's the way we monthly, we push it out to the department every month.
And then, how many officers have been accused of using force? Let's just say in the past two years.
Accused of using force? Are you talking about with personnel? I don't, I don't have the number, I can get the number in terms of, it's easily retrievable, but I don't have that.
And I would love those numbers, and also would love to know how many of those officers have been removed for excessive force, or how many of those officers have had some type of discipline for excessive force? That would be great to have as well.
Sure.
And then, do you share your IAB data publicly?
Our what data?
IAB, Internal Affairs.
Internal Affairs? Yes, we do. We have a discipline report that we report to our, to the commission. That's also on the website, and we do share, it's anonymized, so there's no names attached, but the different categories and what discipline was imposed. And our department is structured differently from most, because we have a Department of Police Accountability, which is a civilian, you know, discipline oversight group headed by Director, Executive Director Henderson, Paul Henderson. So their data is separate from ours, but both are reported publicly.
And the data you asked reported publicly that you don't share with everyone because it's anonymous, do you share with DPA and Police Commission actual names of individuals?
The Police Commission, so our discipline system, the Police Commission handles any discipline that amounts to a recommendation of above a 10-day suspension. So they have all that information, and they are privy to all information in order to fulfill their duties. So yes, they have access to all that information. With DPA, they're, when it's appropriate and legal to do so, we also share with DPA. Yes.
So let's talk about budget real quick, and I know you and I have had conversations about this. And you're talking about needing resources, additional resources, to be able to complete some of the recommendations. And you know that this past year, Mayor Breed and I were able to find $120 million from your budget to reallocate to invest in community. You don't think that's something that you have the ability to do as well, is find resources within your own budget to address the issues and problems that exist in the force?
Well...
And maybe one suggestion is less consultants?
Well, the answer to that, let me, it's a little bit more complex than just the CRI work. Our technology needs existed before CRI. CRI just called it out. Our records management system needs total overhauling. You know, our system was not designed to do what it is now doing. We passed it up for years, we're spending a lot of money on it, and it needs total overhauling. Part of our data issues stem with those types of just structural fundamental issues. We don't have a case management system with our investigative capabilities. We don't have a proper... We don't have a property tracking system. So these things are not only technology needs, they cause us to be less inefficient. Supervisor Preston, uh, was very frustrated about the data and I tried to best I can explain. If we, we have some challenges with fielding the request that we have, so we have to prioritize. Now, we, we are definitely realistic and we don't, I'm not saying that, you know, we ask for the, you know, stars and the moon and we get it. But that conversation has to be had because, you know, you, you can only work within your capacity and your bandwidth. And yeah, we can always push for more and we do, and we, our, our folks work hard. But those technology issues will be on, the C R I assessment just called it out. You know, our, 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 our ability to track arrest data, it was called out in the assessment report. It takes some, some capital investment on that. Uh, we had, uh, a twenty year, you know, struggle with the whole criminal justice, you know, reporting system that we've been working on for years. And all that plays into this Supervisor Walton. So yeah, it is a big issue and, you know, like always, we, we work with what we have and we try to make the best of it. But I think is, is, you know, incumbent and it behooves all of us to at least call it out and understand what the needs are. And the D O J report called it out. Part of the D O J report was we worked to do a gap analysis, that called it out. We have technology needs and some of them will impact our ability to finish some of our recommendations. We'll do the best we can and work around. But yeah, those needs are there and they've been called out by people outside of this organization and we'll do the best we can.
Well, I think in our reallocation of resources, um, we found a way to make sure that we didn't take police off the street and I know that, um, not everybody was in agreement with that. Um, so I think that, you know, rather than looking for additional resources, I, I think you would have, uh, you know, I can't speak for all of my colleagues, but it would probably be virtually impossible for the police department to get additional dollars here in San Francisco. Um, that's my personal opinion and what I would be fighting for. And so I, I would think it would be more realistic to look within the department to see where you could reallocate resources. Um, but we, we do need to eliminate the excuse of not having the resources to complete the recommendations, uh, because that is not something that is going to be acceptable. Uh, and I know you have a lot of hard work ahead of you. I, I have the utmost confidence in you having ability and under your leadership to achieve the completion of the recommendations. But I just want us all to be realistic as, as, as we move forward and, and I, I, I gotta say, I, I don't think that this board is gonna, um, be fighting for the police department to get additional resources. And, you know, you and I had this conversation before and, and, and I just have to say this, and you don't have to be spiritual to understand the Bible verse of you've been faithful over few, now make you ruler of many. That simply means you, you do your job well, you do what you're supposed to, and then you have the opportunity, to, to receive more and, and, and to be given more. But, you know, this, this has to happen with what you have. Um, and so I just have to state that on the record from my standpoint and what I'll be fighting for. Understanding, um, you know, the hard work ahead of you. But I think if we also focus on what's really in front of us and what's at stake, uh, we can put our heads together and, and, and accomplish what's needed. And, and I know, again, I have the confidence in you to be able to do that. Uh, Supervisor Preston, I see that your name has been removed. Was that on purpose? Uh, Chief Scott, I'm sorry.
Supervisor, I just wanted to, to just say to, and, and to your comments, you know, we, we will make the best of whatever, uh, our city leadership decides. You know, I think it's my job to advocate, but when you ask me what the needs are, to tell you and others to advocate for that. And when a decision is made, I will, and this department will respect it. But we will advocate and we will put the information out there and you have to make the decisions. I, I understand your, your job is equally hard and all the board. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. You know, we're going to advocate for what the things that we need. The board has to make a decision, we'll live with whatever those decisions are and we'll do the best we can. Uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll be transparent with the public of what the needs are. We're not, you know, gonna try to oversell or make excuses, you know, we got to finish this work. And we're going to do the best we can to be resourceful. We will ask for what we need and that decision will be up to you all, but we will ask.
And, and you have my commitment to, to work with you and, you know, do the hard work of figuring out how to get this done with what you have. Um, even if that means supporting you and finding ways to reallocate resources. Uh, but you do have my commitment in, in, in the work in that aspect also, so I want you to know that too, Chief. Uh, Supervisor Preston, was I correct that you, uh, withdrew your name?
Correct.
Thank you. Supervisor Ronan?
Yes, thank you. Um, first I just wanted to appreciate the chief and, and, and your staff and all of my colleagues. This has been an excellent hearing and I really have appreciated listening to, to all of you and, and, and the information given. Um, Chief, I want to thank you. Um, specifically, you are someone that I so deeply respect and who has worked so hard from day one on, on police reform. And I've, I've watched you do it the whole time and I just wanted to take a moment to, to appreciate you because I, I know we, we butt head sometimes, but, um, you know, it's always from a place of just tremendous respect and and acknowledgement of your work and I, I, I just had to start out that way. I, I don't have any more questions about the report today. I just, um, this has been a rough day in terms of data. And, uh, this morning I got data on, um, the learning loss during COVID nineteen from the San Francisco Unified School District. And, uh, it, the first really difficult piece of information is that the school district, under normal circumstances, would have expected the African American community to have been negative nineteen, and I don't know what the marker is yet, this data will become public in a minute, we can all analyze it, but negative nineteen points ba- or, 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 or something behind proficiency in reading. Instead, because of distance learning, African American children are negative two hundred and fifty point two points, I don't even know what the marker is, again, I need to deep, more deeply understand this. We will have a public hearing so we can do this. Behind proficiency in reading. In math, they are African American children are three percent, negative three percent behind where they're supposed to be. So when we talk about the schools to prison pipeline in this country, because of like institution in this country, it is real and it is getting worse. And we are failing as a city to address these disgusting statistics. And, and this is on every single department, every single one of us. I thank the heavens for President Walton and Mayor Breed's commitment to reparations for the black community. But it is not even beginning to scratch the surface of enough, of just the disgraceful systemic racism that plagues this country when it comes to not just the black community, other communities of color as well. But, but the black community is always off the charts when it comes to these statistics. And it is a time for a reckoning from schools to police to public health to every aspect of society. It is time to do right by the black community in this country. And I know we're going through this as a nation, but I just ha- I just had to say this is, this is not just, it, it, it's, it's a major issue and the statistics you showed us today, Chief Scott, we're sicking. Um, but there, you're not alone in these disgusting statistics and it's all interconnected. Uh, the statistics we got this morning from S F U S D are disgusting. And we have to do something about it with urgency in every aspect of our society. And I just couldn't let the rest of this hearing go without, um, without talking about that. And, and I just, I just again, wanted to thank you.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor Ronan, thank you very much. Thank you so much Supervisor Ronan. Supervisor Chan?
President Walton, thank you so much and thank you Chief Scott for being here with us today. Um, I, I, I think that, uh, for my colleagues and I, I hope that I look forward to perhaps, you know, in our future hearing to also include, you know, um, Director Paul Henderson from the Department of Police Accountability. Um, perhaps that'd be able to provide us some data, uh, at least independently, uh, from the department, uh, to allow us to further understand, uh, some of the complaints filed against the department. I think that will be tremendously helpful, uh, just so that, you know, in some way we, we sort of so uh, having a second opinion, so to speak. Um, so I, I just want to make that point, uh, and, and make that note. I think, um, specifically, I would really like to go back to the presentation, uh, Chief Scott, your team presented. I think specifically my concern is really around community policing. I think, uh, for the most part, truly, you know, community policing and, and community engagement is, is sort of the, the, the public interfacing where, uh, less tension, uh, and, and it's not a confrontational situation. Um, perhaps that is where the trust, uh, and respect can be rebuilt, uh, under the circumstance. So I, I would like to learn more just, uh, about in your presentation, page thirty one. You know, you mentioned the community liaison units. I would really like to understand the establishment, how do you approach to establish such unit? Uh, and here you mentioned the liaison officers. How do you identify, uh, these officers to be qualified as, uh, liaison officers, so to speak? Uh, and specifically, I, I think for me, like to understand, you know, how do you identify both like cultural or language competency among these officers? Or whether, whether or not there is such, uh, standard when you recruit them or identify them? Uh, and where does the unit actually physically located? Is it in your headquarters or actually are they deployed in all, um, police district stations? So that each, uh, you know, and, and how many are there? So, so that, that, that will be my questions and I may have more, but, but I would love for you to speak on for now and, and answer my initial questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you Supervisor Chan. I, I'll start off and then I would like to allow Commander Fang to speak on this too, because he is part of the, uh, command staff that's, that's really, uh, pushing this forward. So the community liaison unit, um, really the, the, the the goal behind it and the idea behind it is we, we saw a need for, uh, some of our, our communities, Chinese community, Muslim community. Uh, we, we've had, you know, series of, of issues with, you know, Russian community in terms of suffering hate crimes and alike. To really start with that core group, uh, the Latino community as well, Latinx community. Start with that core group and, and the African American community, so. But that core group and we have, we've assembled a team of officers to really work closer with, with leaders and community members and, and in those core groups. Now, the whole idea behind it, not to exclude any other group, but those other groups has a lot of this discussion has revolved around the African American community, the disparities there. Uh, we know that there has been a lot of victimization in the Chinese community where, you know, there is, there is, we believe the possibility of underreporting, maybe even a lack of trust and people not reporting because of that. And so we want to get better. The L B G T Q community, which one of our officers, we have a, a member representing that community or a liaison to that community. So we wanted to get better. Part of also is last year we saw in this country and in the city, uh, we saw an increase in hate related incidents and, and, you know, slight increase in hate crimes in some areas. So that's another issue that we wanted to pay, uh, special attention. You know, we have investigators to investigate those crimes, but we believe that this community liaison function can really be a bridge between the district stations, you know, whatever investigation team that's working these crimes and actually the communities that they impact the most. So part of the structure that Commander Fang talked about, you know, the community policing strategic plan, uh, having a structure that, that, that's not organic, but actually have a, 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 a community policing structure. Uh, this fits into that structure real nicely. They, a couple of your questions, I can answer them and then I'll turn over, uh, for more details to Commander Fang. They report to mission station and that's where our community engagement division is housed. That's where Commander Fang, uh, before we pulled him off to work full time and on reform, he and his team are housed. So they're part of that team, but their real challenge and real function is to be a liaison and a bridge to bring those communities and other communities closer to the district stations by this liaison. Uh, being more attentive, you know, uh, helping the investigators, enhancing what we do in terms of investigations and the community policing functions. So they really are a bridge and, and, and enhancement to what's happening in the district stations and the investigation bureau. And we believe that it's going to pay dividends, you know, it's, we're starting off small, but, um, we believe that, that this small structure, we can build it out some more. Uh, we started in October, at the end of October, so we're just starting.
So if my ma- if I may, President Walton, if I could follow up questions?
Of course.
Thank you, and, and I don't mean to pin you down on this specific, uh, Chief Scott. I, I think that while it sounds really great to just having this diversity, I, I, I'd like to learn a little bit more about exactly how many officers that we're talking about under this unit. I, I'd like to understand, uh, exactly, like, when you say they go to the communities, what does that mean? And, um, like, I, I, and I, I'm, I don't mean to be as specific as if, you know, are they, do they work in a day shift and, and, and do they just attend community meetings? Or are they actually being called on site when there's an incident, uh, you know, that is taking place to communicate? Like, I, I just want to throw in, it's a question like I want to ask. For example, if, you know, there is an incident in District One regarding hate crime, uh, or that we see targeted crime a- against Asian American merchants or vandalism against merchants, will, will, will a community, you know, or will liaison officers show, show up, you know, along with the team? And, and how, how does that work? And of course, my, my question really start with how many officers we're talking about, because you mentioned, um, it's a, it's a small team. Thank you.
So if I, I'm going to ask Commander Fang to, he was instrumental in getting this started, so Daryl?
Yeah, thanks Chief, I appreciate it. So Supervisor, to your question, uh, we currently have six representatives that comprise the community liaison unit. As noted in the presentation earlier, we have a liaison, uh, both to the African American, Muslim, Asian Pacific Islander, L G B T Q and Latinx communities. Um, and really this was, as the chief has alluded to, was, uh, was developed based on deficiencies that were identified within the communities and brought to our attention. Um, it was in response to a number of unfortunate, you know, violent, uh, incidents involving, um, you know, more marginalized members of our community, particularly like the Asian American community, uh, the Chinese community, where we had a couple of incidents involving elderly, uh, Asian females where they were robbed. And there were language issues that were involved in the process. There are also issues of, um, lack of communication as far as how the investigative process, uh, took place and really communication with the victim and their family. So really the, the liaison unit was created to try to bridge some of that gap, uh, to ensure that when the department is made aware of these issues, that we reach out through our community stakeholders, whether that is, uh, through community based organizations, whether it's at the district station level, that we are connecting with the community to make sure that their needs are being met. So that's really kind of the genesis behind how this unit first evolved. As the chief alluded to, we are starting small because we, we don't have, uh, members, actually, some of the members of the community liaison unit were actually housed or within the community engagement division. And the community engagement division really kind of sets, if you will, the structure for this particular unit, the vision, the mission behind it. Um, as you well know Supervisor, it, it's been a little bit challenging because of COVID, our ability to be out in the community. But I will tell you just some things that we've done in response as this unit has been established is, um, we've gone to the district stations, connected with some of the community, uh, victim, families of the victims, uh, you know, enhance visibility in the community as far as, uh, visible patrol for, you know, enhance uh, visibility and for, for safety in those areas. And it's just trying to re- work with the community on. And, and just trying to re- work with the community on, uh, you know, addressing and collaborating on issues that they bring to our attention.
Yeah, and, and I think, if I may, another follow-up question. You know, I think with the six officers, um, how do you identify, I mean, I, I think you have thousands of, uh, officers on, on the force and the department, within the department. How do you identify this unique and special six?
So you brought up some good points. I think you mentioned cultural competency, right? One of the things that we really look to in terms of finding the right, um, member who provides that skill set. Cultural competency, competency, someone who has knowledge of, of, of the community as well as some skill sets such as, uh, you know, language access. In this particular unit, we have people who speak, um, Cantonese. Uh, also, uh, we have, as I mentioned, a Muslim, uh, officer. We also have one that, um, speaks, uh, Spanish speaking as well. We also have an LGBTQ, um, female officer who actually serves as a liaison. So, you know, these officers are selected based upon their experience and exposure and their competency in these areas and really their connections that they have made, uh, within even previous assignments with the community. So, um, you know, we, we continue to look to expand this unit, uh, but I just wanna make clear also that we do have community liaison officers that are assigned at each district station as well. So really this unit is expanding exponentially at the district station. So for example, uh, at Central Station, there are, uh, two community liaison officers that are assigned to Central Station. Should there be an issue, a crime issue, some sort of incident that requires resources, they will reach out to the community liaison unit, uh, for support in terms of those resources, whether that is language access, whether that's, uh, resources that can be provided in terms of personnel, um, and other things that we, we can help support their efforts, uh, in, in that particular district.
Thank you. I, I, I think, um, President Walton, I just wanna make a last statement, um, that it's a statement, uh, that I think for a, uh, for units of six officers out of thousands of them. And, uh, I, I, I think here, here's truly, uh, just my observation. Obviously, I'm not a criminal justice expert, um, and, and if I may to offer this, uh, just my observation and insight on this matter. And when it comes to community policing and talking about serving our communities that is so diverse and all eleven districts, supervisory districts, that it, the feeling of it is as if that six officers or maybe, uh, additional two in each police station, it's enough for community policing, uh, or, you know, in this case, as a community engagement division. It, it feels lacking, uh, when it comes to the effort and investment. Um, I, 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 that's my observation and I, I really hope to see a way of thinking that is beyond just dedicating specific officers, but, but to, most importantly, I mean, I see here that it, there's a mention about peer-to-peer training, but, but that mentality and that effort should really extend to your entire department when it comes to the philosophy of community policing and that they all should be actually be able to be trained to have the cultural competency, if not the language, you know, competency, to really handle any of the situation that is happening in all the neighborhoods. So that's just my feedback and, um, thank you so much.
Supervisor, I could just add very quickly, uh, just to clarify, um, community policing is embraced throughout the department by all of our members and they are provided training in that area. And the expectation is that they all engage in, uh, good community, you know, policing practices as well as engagement effort. So I, I just wanna be clear that although this liaison unit is a specialized unit, that all throughout the department, uh, the expectation is that community policing is embraced by all its members as well and practices.
If I could just add one other thing, just really important to know Supervisor Chan and thank you for, for those, the feedback. With the community policing recommendations, one of the findings spoke to, uh, that our department, although we were, we've been doing community policing, you know, but it was at an organic level. So the, the structure of the department, the recommendations that spoke to that really recommended that we, we organize our structure and then it gets pushed outward. So we don't, we don't intend to represent that six officers are gonna represent all the community policing for the city. The, the, the real value, uh, with this part of the conversation is the structure, that it's, it's, we have a command officer, command staff officer that oversees this group and that that's pushed throughout the department. And that's why we created the community engagement structure. It was based on, you know, one of the recommendations, that there needs to be a centralized structure that pushes community policing throughout the department. That's what Commander Fung and his team, uh, that's what they do before him, Commander Lazar. And that was in addition, based on the recommendation, to have the infrastructure to be successful here and push it out. So that's really what that core group is, has been put on to do, is to get it started, to create the, the infrastructure with, you know, Commander Fung's leadership and to push it out to the department. So really it's in the spirit of the recommendations in terms of infrastructure as it relates to community policing.
Thank you, Chief. Supervisor Preston and Supervisor Mandelman?
Thank you, President Walton. And, and just a, a comment, cuz there's been, um, various, um, answers along the way and comments around, uh, the data, uh, the difficulty obtaining data. And I just wanna circle back, uh, to the points earlier, um, about the, the lack of, of per capita data over the years, to say this. In the short time, I don't know what it's been, a couple hours, uh, that we have been at this hearing, I've now been notified by two community members, uh, including, uh, a wonderful graph by Chris Arvin on District Five resident, who took the, the San Francisco Police Department data and produced, uh, quarterly from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, uh, the per capita data regarding, uh, regarding arrests by race. Um, uh, I was reminded that, uh, Felicia Jones of Justice of Wealth and Disparities in the Black community, uh, also distributed to our offices earlier today, uh, per capita data, again, uh, going back, this going back to twenty sixteen. And I've learned, again, based on San Francisco Police Department data, the per capita, uh, rates of stops, arrests and uses of force, um, by, by race. So I, I just wanna take issue with the idea that this is data that would be time-consuming or require a lot of person power in the department, uh, to obtain. The police department has all this data. Uh, it apparently took one of my constituents, who is admittedly good with data, uh, all of an hour or two, uh, to put that data into, uh, the kind of chart that I think should be presented, whether the department is before the Board of Supervisors, the Police Commission, uh, because what, what it shows, and again, I would rather see this from the police department to be a hundred percent sure, uh, that it lines up with, with your data and your analysis. But what, what the advocates are showing us, shows that the rates, which again, I think are the best evidence of bias, have stayed pretty flat. They go up and down a little bit, but when you look back twenty, twenty seventeen, eighteen, uh, nineteen and twenty, at least the data I'm looking at, uh, you, you see a little bit up and down, but you don't see a major change. Um, and that's concerning when you, when you line it up with all of the reforms that, that you've been, you're talking about, uh, today. So I just, I just wanna reiterate that I think any future presentations, whether to us or the Police Commission, there should be the rates of stops, arrests and uses of force by race over a multi-year period. Thank you.
Chief, did you have a response?
No, I, I, uh, definitely, uh, I hear Supervisor Preston and we will get that data and, you know, nothing else to be said. We'll get the data.
Thank you. Supervisor Mandelman?
Thank you.
Uh, thank President Walton. I, I am sure there is a lot of public comments, I won't, I'll, I will be brief. Um, I do wanna thank the chief, uh, for, for the presentation today and also for all the work that has gone, um, into, uh, the increasing rate with which these, um, these recommendations appear to be getting addressed. Um, and certainly thanks to the Police Commission and to the community as well for pushing for that. Um, and it does, I, I hope that we are in fact getting, uh, close and in this year will achieve, um, uh, you know, full compliance with, with the, the recommendations that we've received. So that's, um, feels like a very positive outcome of this hearing, cuz it has not felt that way to me in, in previous iterations of this hearing. Um, I really, I wanna appreciate, uh, Supervisor Ronan's comments because I, I think, um, the, uh, the oppression in particular of African-American people is built into every institution that we have, from our schools to our healthcare system, um, and certainly to our criminal justice system, um, but also land use. I mean, you can, you can sort of work your way through all of the ways in which, um, in which African-American hopes and aspirations are, uh, not successfully, but, but, but are , are groundbound. Um, and, um, and I guess the, the hope that I have is that we can have a clearer understanding of whether and how our criminal justice system and our police department reflect or accelerate the, um, overall, uh, grinding down that, um, Black people are experiencing in, in San Francisco and in society more, more broadly. And I do think that, that, that the, the request for this data over time, I mean, the per capita data is tricky for reasons that I think Supervisor Melgar was maybe partly getting at. And I do think that figuring out, you know, understanding what the denominator is and what it means, um, is important. But I think that in, in, in measuring whether we're being successful or not, you know, you can generate better numbers for African-American, African-American and other minorities, um, simply by doing less policing. And, um, and we want something better than that. Um, we want policing that is less biased and that is, that is serving every community. Um, and so, uh, I, I take that to be, at least partly, part, I don't wanna speak for Supervisor Preston, but my interest in seeing that data over time is to see what, what those trends are and if the trends, whatever the relevance of the denominator, whether you have, whatever your denominator is doing, if you're not seeing a decline over time, um, that would suggest that you're not actually getting the thing that you, that you want, I think. But, you know, this conversation will continue. Um, this problem has been built over four hundred years. It's gonna take a little bit of time to solve it, but I wanna thank you for your, um, commitment to this work. So, thank you, Chief.